Requesting all council members to please take your seats at this time. Thank you. Can have all council members, even outside, can you please take your seats so I can begin tonight's... So, tonight we'd like to start off, we'd like to welcome everybody to the Albany Common Council's Monday, June 3rd, 2019, uh, meeting. Uh, with that being said, can the clerk please call the roll?
President.
Here. Here. Mr. Igoe is here as well. Thank you. Um, before we, um, before I ask to stand for our Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence, I would like to state, just so people can get themselves together, uh, during public comment period, we normally give five minutes for each speaker, but because of the large number of people who've signed up, and also those who might not have signed up and would like to speak, uh, the first part of our public comment period, you would only be allowed to speak for two minutes on any subject you choose to speak to. Uh, later on, after that, later further on, if people stay, we, we couldn't add additional thirty minutes, uh, later down in our agenda. But, so people can prepare themselves, uh, the first part, once we begin the public comment period, you will only be allowed to speak for two minutes. Uh, with that being said, those who wish, can you please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance? And after that, we'll have a moment of silence. Before we begin public comment, I'd like to ask Mr. Conti, recognize Mr. Conti.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to make a motion, um, to change our order of business, to add by majority consent to tonight's agenda, Resolution 376119R, and Resolution 386119R, and to further provide, uh, that aft- if successful, that aft- that that motion is, uh, adopted, that we immediately take up for consideration, uh, Resolution 376119R by Mr. Robinson.
Uh, do I have a second on that? Second, all those in favor? Motion passes. That being said, uh, Mr. Robinson.
Thank you, uh, Mr. President. I notice Resolution 37, uh, point six, one point nineteen R, uh, and ask for its introduction and passage.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson. Can the clerk please read the resolution? Is there any discussion on the resolution? Mr. Robinson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to say that it is an honor and a privilege, uh, to honor this young lady tonight, Ms. Jazae L. Addison. Uh, I've known her since she was, um, a little baby, and she has grown to a young woman who is a role model, uh, in her community, in her church, and in her school. And just recently, uh, she was a part of, uh, the Delta Sigma Theta's 2019 Debutante Cotillion, and she was crowned Ms. Deb after she raised fourteen thousand dollars for the organization. And so, I just feel that, that we should honor her on tonight. Thank you, Mr. President.
Any more further discussion? Mr. Pleers.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Councilman Robinson, for this legislation. And congratulations, Jazae, on, uh, being named, um, and honored. I am a member of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated, and, uh, one of the things that we enjoy most is being able to mentor young girls and young women in our community who exemplify, um, what it means to be bold and strong and beautiful and smart and intelligent, and you definitely exemplify that. Uh, the Cotillion and the history of that is really for, um, African-American communities. It is a coming-out celebration for young women in our community. It's an opportunity for them to present themselves to society. And this is not, uh, an easy thing, because I just want to note that these young women go through a rigorous process over several months of training and preparation. Their parents, uh, in the community is really invested in this process, and, um, it takes a lot to put yourself out there, it takes a lot to raise money, and, um, you have been crowned because you were the top, uh, raiser in terms of money, but just in general, uh, a total package when it comes to what the Cotillion exemplifies. So, congratulations to you and of course your mom on this honor. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, can the clerk please call the roll?
Yes, co-sponsor please.
Yes, co-sponsor please.
Yes, co-sponsor please.
Yes, and I believe we're all listed as co-sponsors.
Yes, and I am proud to be a co-sponsor.
Yes.
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 Resolution passes. Congratulations. And now we'll move to public comment period. Each person will have two minutes to speak on a subject they choose to speak on. At this time in public comment period, um, council members cannot respond, uh, to your public comment. This is only for the public to speak. If com- if members of the common council chooses to comment on anything spoken at public comment period, they will do so later in the meeting. And once again, uh, two minutes for each speaker, just because of the number of people we do have signed up to speak. Uh, and later down the agenda, if there's some people who are still left here and would like to speak publicly, we, we will allow that as well. With that being said, uh, can the clerk please call the first speaker?
Janet Dwyer Stutzman.
Also, when you come to the table, please list your name and your address for the record as well.
Good evening, I'm Janet Dwyer Stutzman, 226 Euclid Avenue, Albany, New York. Thank you. Oh, I can, I got a loud voice. I, I'm hoping I, I will get this in. I appreciate coming to this room in one of the oldest cities in the United States as an adult. I was raised to believe that our government is only as strong as its citizens are engaged and participating. Many of us remember when the planning board believed that it was their responsibility to encourage residents' input. I ask you, as our elected representatives, to protect that public participation and redirect or mandate this input as agency policy. The use of the terms "sustainable" and "environmental" in the present USDO is deceptive in light of the recent actions of the planning board. I see no plans for alternative energies, for abatement of pollution during demolition, or climate control initiatives. From 2000, oop, nope, skip that. I want to know how environmentally friendly a large building has to be to justify leaving no setbacks with room for mature trees or significant green space. Couldn't we not have some smaller buildings? Right now, the proposed size casts large shadows over existing nearby homes. Some will not see the sun.
You have one minute remaining.
All year. Squeezing large dense buildings into established neighborhoods without having countermeasures to protect against negative environmental and social impacts reflects the very practices that have brought our climate and our society to the volatile, dangerous state we struggle with now. We can't afford this carelessness. We need to know what is smart, what is appropriate, and what is excessive in our developments. We need development that protects the future. It has to use sound civic and environmental practices. I ask our elected representatives to pause all development and review the USDO, correcting policies that have brought us to this point so that we can make our city stronger for the coming storm. I brought the Nature Conservancy, I just got this a couple days ago. Concrete jungle. Cities are deploying millions of trees in the fight against climate change.
Your time is up, ma'am. Thank you. And if anyone, uh, I know, you know, we shortened public comment, but if you would like, if you have prepared speeches, like with you, uh, we can make copies and we can disseminate to that each council member, so they do get the full list of what, what you're, what you came to speak about, if you have them already prepared. Um, so can the clerk please call the next speaker?
Teresa Bronner.
I've reduced this and I'm going to, uh, my comments here, and I'm going to give you some copies for the record. My comments, uh, about development.
Name and address, please, ma'am.
Teresa Bronner, 154 Brevetor Street in Albany.
Thank you.
Is this working okay? Um, my comments are not about any specific development, although I will be impacted by the 60 Calvin Avenue development, which is totally out of control. Uh, I'm, I'm addressing the climate of how this is happening in Albany. There are no responses, in my experience, to emails or phone calls from the ma- phone calls from the mayor's office. No response to those from Planning Department and codes. Apparent flaunting of city codes by Planning Department head, the wink and the nod and the wave. You know, like, forget the codes kind of thing. Unreasonable, disrespectful, and quasi-tyrannical behavior by the planning board chairperson. I was subject to that a year ago. At public board meetings, where the public can speak, treating speakers as though they are nuisances. Overall, generally dismissive attitude of city administration towards the public, that's been my experience. Board of Elections' public website showing generous donations by some developers to Mayor, Mayor Sheehan's campaign fund as recently as early 2019. I favor appropriate development in Albany, I'm not an imby.
You have one minute remaining.
I want it to be code-compliant, scaled to the size of the surrounding buildings, and harmonized with existing neighborhoods. I favor a city administration that respects and works with its residents instead of ignoring their point of view and, and sometimes even abusing them. No more pulling the wool over our eyes, we are not stupid. I favor an open process instead of a mayor and city department, and city departments that appear to be playing fast and loose with the codes. Is it now time for new respectful leadership in planning and codes and in the mayor's office? Clearly, what we have now is not working for all the people in its beautiful neighborhoods. It certainly is something for all of us to think about seriously. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Please refrain from, uh, clapping. Thank you. You like that for the record. Thank you. Thank you so much. Can the clerk please call the next speaker?
Gear Solon.
My name is Gene Solon. Uh, I live at 16 Prospect Terrace in the New Scotland neighborhood of Albany. Uh, I would like to, uh, ra- raise with you this evening a, um, a, a point. The, basically, what drives the decision-making is supposed to be, in, in relationship to projects, is supposed to be the Unified Sustainable Development Ordinance, or USTO, as it is called for short. And that's supposed to be the guidebook. If the guidebook is not being followed, or if the guidebook fails to protect, uh, the integrity of our neighborhoods, then the guidebook needs to be amended. There's a process of amendment. And that, I would suggest, in, 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 in the case of, um, i- i- in the case of these tall buildings that are being projected, five, six, seven stories, uh, by many developers now, that, that should be scrutinized and...
You have one minute remaining.
And if it's not appropriate for one or two-story residential neighborhood, then it should not be permitted. So, I would urge the, um, that the common council, uh, and, and its members, uh, to exercise their authority to do a, an amendment. I understand, uh, the, uh, USDO is on, is in a period of evaluation right now. If it can't be, if the evaluation can't be completed in two weeks or a month, then delay the, uh, delay the findings to, to give everyone adequate time to have input on this, uh, e- evaluation and revision. Uh, thank you very much for, uh, giving us the opportunity to come here and present our case.
Thank you, sir. Can the clerk please call the next speaker?
Steve Burke.
Hello, good evening, my name's Steve Burke. I'm a forty-year-plus resident of Clarendon Road in Albany. Of those forty years, the last seven, approaching seven, a little over six anyway, have, uh, been, uh, spent under the threat of predatory development, very close to us. But I thank you for this opportunity to address a matter that has and will continue to dramatically impact the character of life and the quality of residential neighborhoods across all of Albany. I speak from my experience in monitoring the 1211 Western Avenue proposal, really since January of 2013, and from working with property owners, many here, from several adjoining neighborhoods. Currently, the planning board is functioning as the chief advocate for the expedited development of highly intrusive, highly impactful, high residential structures in or adjacent to established residential structures, long-time established residential structures. These proposals are poorly conceived, inconsistent with the character of their proposed locations, and will further stress already inadequate, excuse me, inadequate infrastructure. They represent infill, a USDO term, at its worst. It is not planning. Number three, it is irresponsible and often not compliant with the city's own USDO, the New York State Seeker Act, state fire codes, and the long-term compliance plan along with speedy permits that control what's going on in the neighborhood. As a consequence, it clearly is time for a stand-down in the current pattern of promoting and approving projects, despite the inadequate environmental and infrastructure reviews, no consideration of residential concerns, violations of fire safety standards, and no identified economic benefits to the city. I really appreciate your attention. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Can the clerk please call the next speaker?
Elizabeth Derbarian.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I live at 25 Clarendon Road in Albany. I've lived there for thirteen years. I've spent most of my time as a resident of this neighborhood, fighting to protect the integrity of the neighborhood. We are encroached upon by SUNY Albany, we're encroached upon by the State Office campus, and now the Albany Planning Board has approved the building of a seven-story apartment building. I have a master's of public health degree, I've, um, managed grants for walkable communities. I can tell you that none of the, none of our grantees built seven-story apartment buildings to make the, the neighborhoods and the communities more walkable. If you've tried to cross Western Avenue, if you've tried to drive down Western Avenue, if you've tried to walk your dog across Western Avenue, you are taking your life in your hands. Two people have been killed crossing Western Avenue at the site of the 1211 proposed, 1211 Western Avenue proposed development. This has been a nightmare civic lesson for me. I voted for Mayor Sheehan, I campaigned for Mayor Sheehan. She's talked nonstop about the integrity of neighborhoods, and now I'm fighting against Mayor Sheehan. I cannot believe it. The planning board is a puppet of Mayor Sheehan. They treated us like shit to be...
You have one minute remaining, ma'am.
Frank about it. They were patronizing to us. We did, we have engineers who live in our neighborhood, we have lawyers, we have public health professionals, we have city workers who live in our neighborhood. We presented an hour and a half of testimony before they approved this building. Um, I feel betrayed by the mayor, I feel betrayed by the planning board. I feel like I live in a city with government without representation. I'm a thirty-eight-year resident of this city, and I feel like I'm living in a nightmare. Um, please consider a moratorium on high-rise buildings. We need to look at this city. I am not against development, I am for everything that makes this city great, but the history of this neighborhood, the residential neighborhoods, mine was built in 1932, uh, and we have horrible water issues, we have sewage issues, and we, we've just been living in a nightmare in Albany. Um, if I stay in Albany, it will be a miracle. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. We'd like to get through everybody, um, real quickly, so please hold your applause. Thank you, I really appreciate it. Can the clerk please call the next speaker?
Peter Sheehan.
Good evening. Good evening, my name is Pete Sheehan. I live at 32 Buckingham Drive. Um, I'm a member of the Sierra Club, and for many years I've supported and continue to support walkable neighborhoods and sustainable development. But I don't feel that's what's happening here, and that's why I'm here tonight. The next, the next stage in this, in, uh, in 563 New Scotland Avenue is going to go to the planning board. And the planning board is going to make a determination, and what I would like to see, and our, my colleagues in our group would like to see, is this be declared specifically as a type-one, uh, type-one action under Seeker, the State Environmental Quality Review Act. And this is, this is just not bureaucratic language. We want this to be a type-one environmental, um, project, because you have, that's the type of project that you have the most review under. And the, um, what, where the, uh, planning board is headed, I'm afraid, is to declare this a negative declaration, which means they do not feel that this project is going to have an adverse environmental impact upon us in the neighborhood. That is not correct at all. And what I'm talking about is during this, during this four-year construction phase, we're going to have...
You have one minute remaining.
We're going to have destruction of, demolition of buildings, twenty-five ton and thirty tons of removal per month coming up and down New Scotland Avenue, and then out to the, uh, out to the landfill in, um, in Rensler. And what has not been considered are the hospital patients, for example, at St. Peter's. What, what's going to be the effect on them? The daycare center at Temple Israel, who, who's going to accommodate them? What's, who's going to take care of the traffic for them? Uh, the, uh, nursing home behind St. Peter's, who's going to take care of that? So what we want to see is a, um, is a type, this declared type-one, type-one action with a scoping session so that we can, uh, have a systematic approach to laying out all the, uh, issues that could affect us. And we want the cumulative impacts from this development, as well as the other ones, like 363 New Scotland and 1211 Western Avenue, all taken under consideration. And then finally, we would like, I'd like the, the common council to pass a resolution either tonight or the next meeting to, uh, to have a, to declare 563 New Scotland a type-one action...
Your time is up, sir.
Under Seeker with a, uh, appropriate environmental review. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Can the clerk please call the next speaker?
John Guzewich.
Good evening, and thank you for this opportunity. My name is John, J-O-H-N, Guz-E-W-Y-C-H. I reside at 61 Melrose Avenue in Albany. I want to go on the record, first of all, saying I'm pro lawful development. Unfortunately, that's not what we're seeing in Albany at the present time. The Melrose neighborhood and many other neighborhoods have a history of combined sewer backups into basements. On July 5th last year, the most notable, uh, backup occurred, including to my own home where I had the sewage literally bubbling up out of the sewer into the basement, and my stump pump couldn't keep up with it. My basement was flooded, and I have since installed a backwater valve. The city engineer recommended a backwater valve. I've heard since that time that those often fail anyway, so that's kind of pointless. So I'm sort of at the mercy of, of whatever comes my way from that sewer system. Sewage and s- stormwater discharges are also happening into the Hudson River. This violates county, state, and federal regulations, and the city is already under a number of legal constraints about discharges, and yet here they're proposing multiple developments, they're going to add additional sewage to the overpacked system as it is. Why is this happening? Because of the, of the combined sewer system and its age, and it's already at its capacity. Heavy rainstorms are becoming more frequent. The system, the storm that happened last summer was cited as an example of how more frequent...
You have one minute remaining.
Heavy rains are happening, um, as, and, but the backflow and the flooding of the sewers has happened even with smaller rainfalls. We had one about a month ago that made the, the local newspaper that hit neighborhoods and into the Hudson River as well. This is affecting a public health problem, it's affecting, uh, violations of the city and, and various codes, it's reducing property... various codes, it's reducing property values. The actions the city has taken so far to stop these actions has not happened, the backups continue to happen, the discharges into the river continue to happen, and although some people have said that the twenty, twelve eleven development has approved sewage system, it does not have an approved system, you've been misled on that. So the bottom line for me is that this large residential project will only add more sewage and stormwater to an already failing system. Our slogan is N-I-M-B, not in my basement. Thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you, sir.
Can a clerk please call the next speaker?
Rebecca Garrard.
So hello, I'm Rebecca Garrard, I'm the statewide housing organizer with Citizen Action at ninety-four, ninety-four Central Avenue. So I'm here to speak to the resolution in favor of the state legislation around renter protections. Given the two-minute time limit, I'm just going to say about the removal of geographic restrictions of ETPA, that it's an opt-in situation, and so voting in favor of that would do nothing more than give a tool to Albany that they could study and choose whether to access. I want to spend most of the time talking about good cause eviction legislation, which serves two purposes. One, it prevents retaliatory evictions against community members, so right now we have thousands of evictions that occur because someone complains about the quality of their housing, and they receive a no-fault eviction and are displaced from their home. What it doesn't do, and why it's not detrimental to good landlords, is that it allows for landlords to order an eviction based on cause, so that could be non-payment of rent, it could be damage to property, so there are many protections built in for the good landlords, at the same time protecting tenants who are being abused and marginalized. The other piece of the legislation that's critically important is that it equates an unconscionable rent hike to an arbitrary eviction, so...
One minute remaining.
So right now, we have rents increasing at unaffordable rates, and those are not based on development or investment that is happening in those residences. It might be because of sky rises that are going up next door, but it is not because of investment in a property. And, and we have an increasing homelessness problem here in Albany because of that. What it does do is encourage community development in disinvent, disinvested areas, because a landlord is able to recoup any investment costs that they put into a property through this bill and pass it on to the tenant, so it would encourage landlords to deal with some of the older housing stock and renovate them as the only mechanism they would have to raise rent, thereby making it a better situation for the tenant and also for the community.
Your time is up, ma'am.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Can a clerk please call the next speaker?
Vincent Reguso.
Good evening, my name is Vincent Reguso, I live at thirteen Beach Avenue, Albany, New York. As you know, we have another group here, and they believe in development, and I said to myself, wow, that's the exact same thing I do, I believe in development, but I want responsible, lawful development that is consistent with my neighborhood. That's all I want. And you know, the USDO is supposed to do one thing, it's supposed to make everything condensed and make it a walkable community. So this is what we have to do with the USDO. We have to put a moratorium on until the fifteenth ward gets sidewalks in every street, so I can utilize the USDO that says I can have a walkable community. Do you ask me if I have bike lanes? I don't have any bike lanes. You, you people down in the inner city, do you have bike lanes? I don't have any bike lanes, so that means I can't even ride my bicycle on, on any of our streets. So until the fifteenth ward gets walkable sidewalks and bicycle lanes, the USDO should have a moratorium that it sits still. As far as the neighborhood, we want consistent with our neighborhood, I don't want a seven-story building in my neighborhood, what the hell is that going to do? That's going to shade the light and everything else, and doesn't fit in with my neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reguso.
Can a clerk please call the next speaker?
Anna Marie Lippett.
Hello, my name is Anna Marie Lippett, and I live at four five five Magazine Street. I am just becoming familiar with the twelve eleven project, and I wanted to give my thoughts. Has a traffic study been done of that area? I noticed online, there's one for the hospitals area, but not for our area. You can remember, not even four months ago, you'll remember the green car on its roof upside down in front of Dragon City, three people to the hospital, five cars involved with this building at twelve eleven, we can expect more of that. There are three memorials between Glynn and Magazine Street on Western Avenue where deaths had occurred. I've been there twenty-four years, I would pick up my daughter across the street so she wouldn't have to cross Western Avenue off the bus, and when they're learning to drive and even driving today, I've told them, do not go on the green light. Stop and make sure the cars are not moving on both sides before you turn onto Western Avenue. We are a diverse neighborhood, we're getting more diverse, we have everything, we have SUNY, State Office campus, we have three new buildings, we have dorms, we have housing owners in the area who are turning their homes into rentals for students, we have business and retail. The traffic swells when SUNY is in, and we're always happy when SUNY is out because the traffic decreases.
You have one minute remaining.
There are two areas where building is being considered, the schools are jam-packed at both those areas, on New Scotland and Eagle Point. For some reason, enrollment is down in our schools despite what they tell us, it's decreasing, and it's, it's scheduled to decrease, even with the building of the high school. Our schools with lower enrollment have actually, are at capacity or overcapacity, and we never got to small class sizes. I would just, I would prefer to see home buyers buying homes and families moving in, not renters, not students' rentals, people who are investing in our city and our homes and our community. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Melanie Trimble.
Hi, I'm Melanie Trimble, I'm the chapter director for the New York Civil Liberties Union in the Capital Region. I'm here to speak in favor of the resolution supporting the marijuana legalization. Marijuana arrests are a key driver of mass incarceration in America, and they have a devastating and disproportionate impact on communities of color in New York State. On average, four out of five New Yorkers who are arrested for marijuana possession are black or Latino. Hundreds of thousands of people across the state have been funneled into the criminal justice system for behavior most New Yorkers do not believe should be a crime. Statistics from two thousand to two thousand eighteen show that Albany County ranks as the sixth worst county outside of New York City when it comes to frequency of marijuana arrests. Approximately only one, I'm sorry, approximately one in sixty-eight people here have been arrested for marijuana as a top charge under section two-two-one of the state penal law. These arrests can have profound consequences beyond potential jail time. Educational employment opportunities can be diminished, housing and child custody can be put at risk, and lives can be upended and even destroyed. New York must legalize marijuana for use by adults and limit the often dire consequences of past marijuana convictions, as well as ensure a diverse and inclusive legal marijuana industry, and drive resources to the marginalized communities of color that have been hardest hit by the decades-long war on drugs. For these reasons, the NYCLU supports the passage of resolution number two-two-one-point-five-one-point-one-nine-R, which calls on the state legislature to pass the marijuana regulation in Texas Act.
You have one minute remaining.
Oh, good. We also support resolution number twenty-three-point-five-one-point-one-nine-R, calling for the expungement of records related to marijuana convictions here in Albany. Very important. We must seize this opportunity to end the failed war on drugs and repair some of the damage it has wrought. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can a clerk please call the next speaker?
Kathleen Johnson.
Hello, my name is Kathleen Johnson, I live at twenty-two Tudor Road in Albany, and Tudor Road abuts the proposed development at twelve eleven Western Avenue. I am speaking for those who are afraid to speak publicly, and sadder yet for those who don't believe that their voice matters anymore. I'm asking you to use your influence to advocate for responsible development that will preserve and protect our neighborhoods, and avoid the quick financial gains two in four out-of-state developers that show no vested interest in Albany's future. Please make sure your citizens' legitimate concerns are incorporated in the decisions that you make that impact all of our lives. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can a clerk please call the next speaker?
Taphne Wallace.
Ms. Wallace?
Laura Phelps.
My name's Laura Phelps, I live at one forty-three Eagle Street, and I'm here this evening to speak to you folks about the resolution that's proposed in support of statewide rent bills, including the Good Cause Eviction Bill and the removal of geographic restrictions of ETPA. A lot of y'all have heard from me already, but I just want to emphasize again the importance that we pass this resolution and tell the statewide government what it is that Albany tenants desperately need. Sixty percent of the folks that live in the city of Albany are renting, and I know that I cannot go another year of watching five thousand households get dragged through the courtroom next door facing eviction when they have utterly no defense. And I think that, you know, universally, we're all very concerned with blight, and it's really important that tenants feel secure and safe and able to report their landlord to code enforcement, to really be able to address housing conditions that are rampantly impacting our neighborhoods, and for that to be a reality, we really need Good Cause Eviction to be in place. It's really can't wait another year, so please pass this resolution, thank you.
Thank you.
Can a clerk please call the next speaker?
Mary Ann Berman.
Yes, my name is Mary Ann Berman, I've lived on Fleetwood Avenue for fifty-one years. I initially came here to discuss five sixty-three New Scotland and twelve eleven Western, until I read this. I read that the Planning Board's statement to the common council that it has zero interest in the expressed concerns of residents living in Albany neighborhoods. If this is true, why are we here? And how could it be true, and why? It's totally disrespectful, and it's insulting. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Clerk, please call the next speaker.
Margie Sheehan.
Hello, everyone, my name is Margie Sheehan, I live at thirty-two Buckingham Drive in Albany. My husband and I have lived there for nineteen years. We are proud residents of Albany, we moved into Albany when all of our friends were moving into the suburbs. We told them how wrong they were to flee the city because we believed the city was always going to be a quality place to live. Like one of the other speakers, Kathy Johnson, I'm here to speak on behalf of some of the residents who are afraid to come here as well. They're afraid to speak out because they think that they're going to be targeted if they do. So, you know, with the last name of Sheehan, maybe I should be afraid, but I'm not going to be. I have a handout for you all here that, that talks about some of the interests that we have and what we really stand for. I know that there's a walkable Albany group that kind of opposes, like, what if some of we are saying, and we sort of oppose them, but the truth is, I really don't feel that we're that far apart. We all want a walkable city, we all want a safe city, we all want a city that builds appropriately, and we want a city that works with us and allows us to be part of the process. And what I would request is for a pause in the development and for a forum to be created where all of us can come together and talk and be a part of the process. I feel like that has not happened. I feel like the developers...
You have one minute left.
Thank you, are, are very much involved here to make a million dollars. I'm, I'm looking at a little irony with regard to five sixty-three, a walkable city, okay, then why are they going to build a three-hundred-car parking garage? I don't understand those luxury apartments going in there, I'm not sure who is going to be able to afford living in them, I don't think those are affordable apartments for people. And the traffic is a nightmare in our area and becoming worse every day, and that issue has not been handled. So I'm going to leave the rest of it here, it's in, it's in my handout, I'm not sure who to give that to, but I'd love for each one of you to get one.
Right here. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Oh, you are, thank you, thank you, appreciate it. Can a clerk please call the next speaker?
Martin Daley.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. Some of you might recognize me, well, first, my name and address.
Thank you, Mr. Daley.
Martin Daley, five-six-four Myrtle Avenue, Albany, New York. Some of you may recognize me because I am the program coordinator for the Albany Pool Communities Long-Term Combined Sewer Overflow Project, which is quite a mouthful, I think I probably used it most of my time describing that. I work with the City of Albany, City of Troy, City of Cohoes, Waterville, Green Island, and Rensselaer on a comprehensive program to reduce sewage overflows into the Hudson River, and as a gentleman mentioned, we are bound by an administrative order to reduce those discharges. Now Albany can only work to address what's in the municipal right away with some of our public improvement projects, through sewer separation, what's happening at, at Lincoln Park, and some, some other facilities that we're constructing. The other half of that equation is what happens on private property, and I know there's been a lot of back and forth about development on private property and how that affects sewage overflows and backups in the neighborhood, but what I can tell you is, a city as old as ours, up until very recently, communities that, private property that generated sewage and stormwater, it just rolled right off the land into the combined system. The only way, the only tool that you have to address that situation is to encourage development that is going to adhere to our modern stormwater codes and reduce that overall discharge into the system. So when a development comes through the Planning Board and, and through that process, the Water Department is statutorily required to look at those proposals, and I can tell you, we have the most progressive stormwater management code in the region. The second element is, you are not alone in facing development pressure. Gilderland and Bethlehem both made headlines recently with over twelve hundred units of proposed development of those communities, and that has two effects on Albany. One, we may be missing out on new population and tax bases here, but for example, if a development is located just over the border where Mr. Pliers is, and that development, the employees are going to where Mr. Conti is, and we are in the middle, the congestion and traffic goes through Albany and creates those congestion problems. Unless we have development that might occur where Ms. Fahy is, we are going to see all the negative externalities without any of the positive benefits. I brought with me some materials about sustainability, about stormwater management, about climate change, and about density and trends in our region from, from my org-
Thank you, Mr. President. Make a motion that we extend the public comment period by additional thirty minutes.
Is there a second on that? Thank you, Mr. Nani. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Can a clerk please call the next speaker?
Ian Benjamin.
Thank you and good evening. My name is Ian Benjamin. I live in the Hudson Park neighborhood at one thirty-four Jefferson. I have a comment on development. For Albany to become the walkable vibrant city we all want it to be, we need to remain open to change. We must especially remain open to projects that increase density near major public transportation nodes and large employers. Such projects encourage more people to live near their employers and take advantage of alternative transportation options, biking, walking, buses. This will help to reduce traffic, pollution, and our dependence upon automobiles. It will help keep Albany attractive to future employers and future generations. Lastly, I'm a fifth-generation Albanian and I rent, but neither of these facts really matters in this discussion because Albany is for those who own and those who rent, those whose families have been here since the city's founding, and those who arrived this morning. Thank you.
Thank you. Can a clerk please call the next speaker?
Andrew Niedhart.
My name is Andrew Niedhart and I pay property taxes at three fifty-five State Street. I founded the group Walkable Albany, who is represented here tonight. The City of Albany is showing impressive signs of growth unlike what we've seen and what we're accustomed to in recent years. This is thanks to the commendable work of this council, Mayor Sheehan, our business improvement districts, and many others who are working to make Albany a better place. It's also due in large parts to this body's efforts along with the administration to rezone Albany. The off-sided statistic that so much of Albany is non-taxable leads us to an inevitable conclusion. We have to use the land we have that is taxable wisely. Land use determines our property values, our tax base, our transportation options, our greenhouse gas emissions, infrastructure costs, and the desirability of our city overall. The inescapable fact is that relatively dense and walkable development is more financially sustainable than uncontrolled sprawl. Not to pick on a particular business, but for example, Home Depot on Central Avenue pays roughly five hundred and fifty thousand dollars per acre in property taxes. That's less than the average per-acre price in Arbor Hill, which is closer to six hundred and fifty thousand dollars per acre. In Center Square, it's four point six million dollars per acre. Our city should provide options for all kinds of people to live here. Yes, quiet side streets with one- and two-family homes are an important part of Albany's fabric-
You have one minute left.
And they've often been, and they have often been given priority over others. These are and should be preserved under our zoning, but busy commercial streets are also part of our plan. Places where mixed uses can thrive and more dense development has always been the case and why it was enshrined in our zoning. Corridors like New Scotland Avenue and Western Avenue, especially near large employment centers like Albany Med, St. Peters, Harriman Campus, and U Albany have always been more dense neighborhood centers, and this allows people to live near their jobs, schools, places of worship, and places of commerce. This is as it should be, especially as we see a trend of people choosing to walk, bicycle, and take transit to get to their jobs and schools. And we shouldn't force people into a car for every trip. This is essential to achieving our climate goals as well. I want to make clear that what's being asked for by Stop the Stories is a moratorium on development across the city. That includes Habitat for Humanity building houses in Sheridan Hollow. That includes low-income apartments along Clinton Avenue. That includes all development. Albany is just starting to heat up in terms of investment and bringing back its tax base. Don't throw cold water-
Your time is up, sir. Thank you. Can a clerk please call the next speaker?
Lynn Jackson.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
My name is Lynn Jackson. I live at two twenty-three South Swan Street in the south end of Albany. Many of the members of the council, who've been on the council for a little bit longer, have probably known about my work in terms of preserving the pine bush, which is partially located in the city of Albany, and that I've actually been a plaintiff in probably at least thirty lawsuits against the city and other municipalities to preserve this absolutely beautiful, unique ecosystem. And today, I'm really happy to be here because what has happened is, is what we want, which is we want to save the pine bush. So we don't want anyone to develop in the pine bush. So how do we save the pine bush? We make our cities livable. We make our cities beautiful, and that's what we want. Density is good. Density is good for cities because then we can live near our services, we can walk places, we can bike places. And my feeling is that we don't need a moratorium on development in the city. We need development in my neighborhood. We need people to rebuild the houses that have been burning down. We need people to live in my neighborhood. And I want to see, and this is an opportunity for the city to really make Albany the beautiful place I know it is. And we're going to save our pine bush because no one's going to be building there, but so we need to focus on building and density in the city itself. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Clerk, please call the next speaker.
Alana Klein.
Alana Klein, twenty-nine Glenwood, one-two-two-oh-eight, not one-two-two-oh-three. A couple of speakers have said that they're here because they're not afraid to speak. I think everyone in this room, sitting in front of me, knows I'm not afraid to say what needs to be said. I'm hearing arguments about sewage backups. If you want to have that conversation about how to prevent that, I'm here for it. If you want to have conversations about traffic because your streets can't handle it or your infrastructure can't handle it, I'm here for that conversation. What I'm not here for is this integrity of the community BS. You want to know why these neighborhoods are suburban? It's called one word: redlining. I am not here for that conversation. Vaccinate your kids. Believe survivors. Boycott the NRA. Black Lives Matter. Islam illegal.
Thank you. Can a clerk please call the next speaker?
Tim Looker.
Good evening. I would like to thank the Common Council-
Can you state your name and your address for the record, sir?
Yes. I live at one forty-six Winthrop Avenue. Been there thirty-four years, member of the neighborhood. Can you hear me?
Thank you, sir. Yes. Thank you.
At least twelve years ago during a rainstorm, my basement flooded twice and I got a backwater valve. This problem continues to happen further down the road to the neighbors. This past year, they put in a four-foot pipe all the way down Melrose, and still they have problems. The twelve-eleven Western Avenue apartment project was originally planned to tap into the west side of Melrose Sewer, but after neighbors from the Melrose and Eagle Hill neighborhood criticized it, it was changed to flow into the Magazine Street sewer line, which is continuing to have overflows to this day. Knowing that there are twenty-four such projects planned in the city, mostly in single-family income neighborhoods, this plan is missing many important parts: safety, parking, traffic congestion, schools, and the list goes on. Infrastructure should be planned, two neighborhoods per year, and postpone a multi-million-dollar seven-eight-seven entrance ramp park. Don't wait for the federal government. I believe they have thirty-two trillion in debt. That's not going to happen soon. Look deeper in the neighborhoods for ones that have good infrastructure.
One minute remaining, sir.
One minute? Everybody should look at the Stop the Neighborhoods, Stop the Stories dot org website for more information. I'm asking this Common Council to put a moratorium on these projects. If you do not, consider that what might happen if these overloaded sewers overflow into the Hudson River with larger flows. The federal EPA could find flows greater than are currently covered on the permit, and that could result in big fines to the city. It might also make it more difficult to get reelected for when taxpayers end up paying these fines in their tax bills. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Can a clerk please call the next speaker?
Roger Markovics.
So I'm Roger Markovics. I live at thirty-eight Myrtle Avenue, been living in Albany for the past forty-nine years with my wife Maria. Been very active primarily with United Tents of Albany, but other nonprofit housing organizations. And I'm here, I wanted to speak in support of a resolution sponsored by Kelly Kimbrough to urging the state to pass tenant protection laws. Two particular ones: a good cause for eviction that would require landlords to have a reason, a good cause for evicting someone, and not just to do it arbitrarily or unfairly and retaliate against tenants who complain. And secondly, part of the state package of rent protections for tenants would be to eliminate the geographic restrictions on rent regulations that now is only in New York City and its surrounding suburban counties, and make rent regulations available to upstate communities like Albany. It wouldn't be importation of New York City regulations here. It would allow us to develop our own regulations about protecting tenants. And the reason for doing this thing is I heard somebody talk earlier about like want to have more homeowners to invest in the community and not just the tenants. Well, you know, tenants are the real investors in Albany. They're the hidden investors. They're powerless investors. Tenants pay-
One minute left, Mr. Mark.
What the tenants pay to their landlords pays property taxes. It pays for the landlord's mortgage and other expenses. So tenants are fueling the investment, reimbursing with no protections at all. So a basic economic justice principle is that tenants should have leased protections against rent gouging and unfair treatment. Housing is not just a commodity to make money off of. It's shelter for people. It's a place to live. Tenants are not just pieces of furniture that you move around and get rid of if you don't like the style. And so tenant protection is very important, and thank you, Kelly, for recognizing this thing and sponsoring the resolution. It's calling on the state to do it. You don't have to pay any money or do anything other than getting the state to step forward.
Your time is up, Mr. Mark.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Can a clerk please call the next speaker?
Brendan Woodruff.
Hello, everyone. Hello, council. My name is Brendan Woodruff, four eighty-eight Broadway, apartment four fifteen. And the reason I'm here tonight is because I think a lot of the debate we're having tonight with the Stop Our Stories folks and everyone else is what the soul of our city is and what kind of community we want to be going forward. Are we going to be a community that welcomes new neighbors, that embraces the future, that becomes more walkable, that becomes more sustainable? I've heard renter thrown around a couple times tonight, and especially on the website of that organization, like it's a dirty word. I am a renter. Hello? I'm actually not that scary. I don't bite. But I want to tell you my experience of being in Albany. I came here five years ago for a job. I decided to rent in Albany. The reason I did that is because I can walk to work. That's no carbon emissions. That's no more traffic. The apartment building that I now live in did not exist five years ago. I lived in Pine Hills. I occasionally drove to work, unfortunately. Did take CDTA a lot of the time, but now I live closer because of this new development. If we continue, or if we have a moratorium on new development near job centers in this city, then that opportunity for more people to follow that lead, to live where they can walk to work, where they can bike to work, where they can easily take transit goes away. And as a couple of the other commenters have said, that development is going to go to Gilderland. It's going to go to Clifton Park. It's going to go to the green bushes, and you're going to have people driving into the city, not paying taxes here, using our roads, getting more potholes, making us all frustrated. So I am unequivocally and categorically against a moratorium on development in the City of Albany. I think we need to be a welcoming community, and I think we need to move forward into the twenty-first century. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Can a clerk please call the next speaker?
Brandon Bissell Evans.
Good evening. My name is Brandon Bissell Evans. I live at twenty-three Delaware Terrace in the Delaware Ave neighborhood. I'm a landlord of a rented two-family where I reside, and I've also been a renter in a number of different neighborhoods here in Albany for the dozen or so years that I've lived here. Having filled both of those roles, I can say with all sincerity that I and all the other landlords in Albany are blood-sucking parasites on the working class of this city. Anything that can be done to expand the rights of tenants against my class should be done at every opportunity and as quickly as possible. As such, I fully support Resolution thirty-one fifty-two nineteen R to expand Good Cause Eviction, and I also hope that the council will go further and institute mandatory rent controls and other tenant protections across the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Can a clerk please call the next speaker?
Daniel Kirk Davidoff.
Daniel Kirk Davidoff, thirty-five Dove Street in Center Square neighborhood. Been here just about two years. I'm going to speak today as a climate scientist and a resident of Albany, just to, you know, put in a word for the planet and the atmosphere on this topic of density in urban environments. It's just an absolutely clear result of looking at, you know, lifecycle analysis of how, you know, a lifetime of a person living in a suburb versus a lifetime of a person living in a denser urban neighborhood. There's just no question that we use a lot less energy in a city, we do a lot less, you know, back and forth driving to work. Houses, apartment buildings are more efficient to heat and cool than single-family homes. A lifestyle of the future where we're able to enjoy the natural environment, but we're able to live in, you know, rich cultural environments is going to be one that where most people are living in denser environments. And the thing is, that's really, because that's so necessary to having a happy life for our kids and grandkids, I think it's really important that we think about how to do it in as, you know, gentle and accommodating a way as possible. You know, it changes hard. People don't like traffic. Traffic is not good. We should, you know, do things to plan for this transition and whatever. So I just want to, you know, as a citizen of the city, I hope that we can do as much as possible to build in advance-
One minute remaining.
...the kind of streets that we need to support dense neighborhoods, you know, easy to bike on, easy to walk on, easy for transit to go back and forth. And I'll leave it at that. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you, sir. Can a clerk please call the next speaker?
Honorable Mark Robinson.
During my time on council, the public comment period was the most important part- It, it's just a, an absolutely clear result of looking at, you know, lifecycle analysis of how, you know, a, a lifetime of a person living in a suburb versus a lifetime of a person living in a dense urban neighborhood. There's just no question that we use a lot less energy in a city, we do a lot less, you know, back and forth driving to work. Um, uh, houses, apartment buildings are more efficient to heat and cool than single-family homes. And the, a, a lifestyle of the future where we're able to enjoy the natural environment, but we're able to live in, you know, rich cultural environments is gonna be one that, where most people are living in denser environments. And the thing is, that's really, because that's so necessary to, um, having a happy life for our kids and grandkids, I think it's really important that we think about how to do it in as, you know, gentle and accommodating a way as possible. You know, it's changes, changes hard, people don't like traffic, traffic is not good. We should, you know, do things to, to plan for this transition and whatever, so I, I just wanna, you know, as a citizen of the city, I hope that we can do as much as possible to, um, build in advance-
One minute remaining.
-the streets that we need, uh, to support dense, uh, dense neighborhoods, you know, uh, easy to bike on, easy to walk on, easy for transit to go back and forth, uh, and I'll leave it at that, thank you for your attention.
Thank you, sir.
Can a clerk, please call the next speaker?
Honorable Mark Robinson.
Thank you. During my time on council, the public comment period was the most important part of my term in this building. It because it gave me the opportunity to listen to the taxpayers and the residents of the city of Albany. It gave me an opportunity to look at the concerns of those who voted me in. And it gave me the power to push legislation, whether it passed or not, that was in their best interest. Tonight, I'm not speaking in support for the pro or the, the, for pro-development or anti-development. What I like to speak about is that I feel that Albany rezone should not have been voted on without a community benefits agreements in place. Because what a community benefits agreement does, it has the developer sit down with the community in which they choose the bill. And in return for the support for that community, the community gives the support for the development. I don't think that development in the city of Albany is inclusive. Because you have billions of dollars of development taking place in communities throughout the city of Albany, but it's not inclusiveness. There's no community benefits in place where states that residents from the inner city work on these job sites. Even if we had three percent of our residents working on these job sites, we can say we can support these developments, or we can support big development in the city of Albany. But that is not happening. And it's not happening because the result of Albany rezone was premature, it should not have been voted on in the last council, it should have been waited till the new term electors came in, and they was able to sort out an eight-hundred-page document that would've, that, that would've, um, set the trend of zoning codes in the city of Albany. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson. Can a clerk, please call the next speaker?
Maria Markovik.
Can I defer to Taphne Wallace, she has a time, maybe, a little later, she's-
Okay. Council members, she, she has signed up for public comment. Her name is on the roll. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. President. My name is Taphne Wallace, I reside at eight G Denise Drive in Latham. And June two thousand eighteen, I was evicted from my apartment in the city of Albany. Not because I paid my rent late, not because I damaged property, or was a bad neighbor. I was evicted because I called code enforcement on my landlord after giving her over nine months to fix repairs that critically need to be done in my apartment. So needless to say, this good cause legislation has directly, would have directly impacted me had it been enacted. Having said all that, having good legal counsel, still, I lost my case. So, when I look back in retrospect, to get the apartment, I had to have pristine credit, references checked, and I had to give a security deposit. And yet and still, I lost my apartment. So, my plea to you is not to make it easier for tenants, but to simply level the playing floor. Because without it, as long as we have no protection, landlords are able to disrupt and displace families. You have elderly being evicted. My situation ended well, but many others don't. So again, um, I'm here to reiterate to you, please do this for the people that you represent, the people that have voted you into these seats, to help us live the quality of life that we deserve. Good, you know, good landlords and good housing, it's not a privilege, it's a right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can a clerk, please call the next speaker?
Maria Markovics.
Thank you. Um, so I, I'm in support of the resolution, um, to extend protections, um-
Please, just state your address for the record, thank you.
Maria Markovics, uh, thirty-eight Myrtle Ave.
Thank you.
Retired, sort of, from United Tenants. Um, so I, I'm, it's obviously speaking in support of the re- of the resolution, which deals with two parts. One is to extend, um, the ability of upstate cities to opt into rent protections. So whether you support rent protections, rent regulation or not, certainly, and I hope you do, we should have the right to have this conversation locally, and to have this opportunity to be able to discuss whether Albany wants to opt into rent protections or not. Right now, we do not have that right to do that. Um, so we're calling, uh, asking you to call upon the state legislature to extend that right to upstate New York. The other issue is good cause eviction, and the question I think you have to ask is why not should a landlord have a reason to ask to remove a tenant from their home? Over sixty percent of the people in this city are renters, but yet we continue to treat them as second-class citizens. Um, so, you know, it, it, enough of this, uh, attitude, it's my property and I can do what I want with it. Well, that property is somebody's home. So in all fairness and justice, the landlord should have a reason to remove somebody from their home. So I really call upon you to support this legislation, it's critically important. It's something that, you know, housing groups have s- really worked for, for many, many years, and it's time has come, the time is now, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Can a clerk, please call the next speaker?
Kimberly Crepp.
My name is Kimberly Crepp, I'm the director of the Capital District Cannabis Consortium and the producer of hosts of Capital Cannabis aired here on Channel Albany, Monday, Wednesday, and Fridays at eleven o'clock.
Can you state your, ma'am, can you state your address for the record?
One oh seven North Manning Boulevard, second floor, Albany, New York, one two two oh six.
Thank you, ma'am.
Been living there for three years, six years on Quail and First, you know how much violence I saw on Quail and First? How much shootings, stabbings, robberies? Because weed is criminalized, and it's so hard for people to get, the bad people are gonna take it from people. And that's what happens when you continue to overtax and overregulate a plant. Bad people take it from good people and harm them. Weed is not even worth seven dollars a gram for the best exotic that you're gonna get. The regulations the New York State wants to place is gonna place one-eighth of weed over fifty dollars and eighth. An eighth, for people that don't know, is three-point-five grams. So if we do the math, seven fourteen twenty-one, twenty-five dollars for an eighth of weed. But you want me to go to store and pay fifty dollars for it 'cause you're telling me you're doing me a favor? A lot of people here are talking about housing, let's really get into the topic of housing. In September, the Department Health was doing sessions across New York State regarding the community's views about regulating and legalizing recreational cannabis in New York State. The majority of the people that got up there were medical marijuana patients that said they couldn't afford their stuff. And they're getting kicked out of their projects and their housing because marijuana-
One minute remaining.
Because marijuana's a controlled substances, listed Schedule I drug, which it's not even supposed to be there. Nixon invoked his executive powers to keep cannabis under Controlled Substances Act when Congress and the Schaefer Commission requested that it be removed and all criminal and civil penalties be repealed. Now y'all wanna be the drug dealers. Isn't it bad enough that y'all been putting us in jail for fifty years? Isn't it bad enough that you're ruining families and communities? Now you wanna overtax and overregulate a plant that we will no longer be able to afford? And then if we have to buy it on the street, then we're gonna get hit with federal charges? At the other meeting, it was abundantly clear that none of y'all read the MRTA. How dare you support a law you haven't read and don't know what the criminal penalties are? What a disservice to the greater community! For shame! For shame asking for a law that you don't know the criminal penalties and the regulations and the tax rates!
Ma'am, your time is up, thank you.
For shame!
Can a clerk, please call the next speaker?
Rohan Grant.
My name is Rohan Grant, I live at Ted McPherson Terrace. Once again, thank you for having me here. I would also like to thank you, I'm from West Hill also. And I come here for two reasons, once again, thank you for developing our block, alright? It's coming along slow and nice, which is kinda bad but good. It gives us time to explain to the people what's really going on in our community. I wish you guys would come out and give us a little bit more information, you know, right now we're the- but to my understanding, they're doing a lot of work, so thank you. Um, on marijuana, it's a very, very tricky subject. But all I'm asking is, if you guys will think of the consumer before you think of yourselves, you know? Stop thinking about where you're gonna spend the money, and thinking about how we are gonna be able to afford and have clear understanding of what you're really talking about.
Yeah, one minute remaining.
Okay, and one of the things is the expunging. I'd like for you guys to basically push that more, okay? Because I just learned tonight, my last statement, there is a difference between lawful and legal. So I guess the only thing that stands out is expunging, and defining what lawfully possession is and legal possession is. Because, um, we're ignorant, this is new, okay? And if you tell the governor, it sounds like he's trying to be a drug dealer, not a good look. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Can a clerk, please call the next speaker?
Julie Lundgren.
Julie Lundgren, fifty-one Winthrop Avenue in the Melrose neighborhood. Um, thank you for this opportunity to speak, um, and for, for, uh, having this long night. Um, I want to support the, um, support the efforts to establish fairer housing and reduce the arbitrary evictions. That is such a huge problem, it's a huge problem across the country, and it's a serious problem here. Um, and I, I support any measures to, to, uh, abate that. Um, my primary reason for being here is to speak to, uh, development. I am, I am for good development, there are a lot of great projects going on right now that I support. Um, but there are also, um, what I see as abuses of the USDO, um, and some poor developments, um, that are impacting neighborhoods. Um, one of the intents of the USDO was to provide some standards to reduce the use of variances, which can often be quite arbitrary and can depend on who is speaking for you and possibly other political pressures. So-
One minute remaining.
Thanks. Um, developers, so specifically, I support the, the, um, moratorium on the use of the, uh, green infrastructure to, to get, uh, prizes for your, for adding on stories or other features for development. Developers are using green roofs, blue roofs, other, uh, techniques to get additional height where they are at the same time removing all the trees, all the green space from the properties. And for example, we, we have examples that have been going through where the impervious surface has been increased from sixty-five percent to ninety-five percent, which is not at all green or sustainable. So I would like moratorium on that, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Can a clerk, please call the next speaker?
Chris Hunt.
Hi, Chris Hunt, I live at twenty Parkwood Avenue off of New Scotland. And I've been, uh, very happy to hear about the planned development up the street from me at five sixty-three New Scotland, because I think these kinds of, uh, big commercial developments will help bring more people to my neighborhood and incentivize the opening of more and better retail and dining businesses, along with the other benefits of, uh, dense development that previous commenters have described. So I thank you for your work to, uh, make that possible. And I know you're hearing a lot of valid concerns from, uh, about development from many other people today, and I hope they can be addressed, but I just wanna express my hope that our city ordinances will continue to allow development, including development of tall and dense buildings, and without requiring so much process or so many constraints that it's no longer cost-effective for the developers. I think this issue's very important to Albany's future, and I thank you very much for your careful consideration of it.
Thank you, sir. Um, that concludes today's, uh, public comment period. As we move on into our agenda, uh, Mr. Conti, do we have approval of minutes? I don't think we, no approval of minutes, okay. No consideration of local laws, but we do have any reports of standing committees? Mr. Kimbrough?
Thank you, Mr. President, the Housing and Community Development, um, committee met on May twenty-third to discuss year forty-five HUD funding, uh, CDBG funding and awards, and home and ESG funding. Uh, we need to have a follow-up meeting with the Community Development Agency to finalize that, so that's in the works. And on May thirtieth, the Housing and Community Development, um, committee had a meeting to take up Resolution thirty-one fifty-two nineteen R. And, uh, it, it's the, uh, rent resolution, uh, the, uh, tenant protection and good cause eviction legislation. And we, um, discussed it, and it was voted out of committee with a positive recommendation, uh, as amended. Uh, the amended, the amendment being, um, asking the state legislature to, to expand beyond its current restrictions to ensure that those buildings constructed after January first nineteen seventy-four and that contained six dwellings or more were also included. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Brien.
The, uh, General Services Committee will be meeting this Thursday on June sixth to consider Resolution eighty-six one oh two eighteen R as it relates to the responsibilities of the General Services Committee. The responsibilities of DGS, excuse me.
Thank you, Mr. O'Brien. Mr. Pleers?
Thank you, Mr. President, the Public Safety Committee met, uh, this afternoon prior to caucus to discuss Resolution twenty-two fifty-one nineteen R and Resolution twenty-three fifty-one nineteen R introduced, uh, by Councilman Robinson. And the, um, so Resolution twenty-two fifty-one nineteen R was voted out favorably pending amendments made by Councilman Igo. Those amendments were passed out by Jared, uh, and so all of the council members should have the most, uh, up-to-date version of that legislation. And, uh, Resolution twenty-three fifty-one nineteen R was voted out favorably without any amendments, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Ms. Fahey?
Ms. Fahey? Kathy? No? Kathy? No? Okay. So seeing we have no other reports of standing committees, we'll move, we'll move to consideration local laws as held, sorry. Introduction of ordinances. Mr. Anani?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. I notice ordinance eleven sixty-one nineteen and asks for its introduction.
Thank you. Uh, can the clerk please read the ordinance?
An ordinance amending article... A? Eleven A. Of the chapter one thirty-three of the Code of the City of Albany to include an initial interior inspection of the property to be registered and to require the providing of proof of the termination of utilities and winterization of the property.
Mr. Conti?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. That is referred to the Law Committee. The remaining ordinances on the agenda are held with the exception of Agenda item number one by Councilmember Fahey who has a motion.
Ms. Fahey?
Thank you, Mr. President. I, um, like to make a motion regarding ordinance thirty-two sixty-two eighteen to withdraw.
Second-hand motion? All those in favor? Uh, ordinance withdrawn. Moving on to introductions of resolutions. Mr. Conti?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. I offer Resolution thirty-three sixty-one nineteen R, um, and request passage and a roll call vote thereon.
Thank you, Mr. Conti. Can the clerk please read the resolution?
Resolution of the Common Council consenting to a title change and adjustment in salary for certain positions for the twenty-nineteen budget.
Any discussion on the resolution? Seeing none, can the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Anani?
Yes.
Mr. Pleers?
Yes.
Mr. Ballerin?
Yes.
Mr. Conti?
Yes.
Ms. O'Shed?
Yes, co-sponsor please.
Ms. Fahey? Ms. Farrell? Mr. Flynn? Mr. Howie?
Yes.
Mr. Igo? Mr. Johnson? Mr. Kimbrough? Ms. Love? Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Fifteen and affirmative, zero negative.
Resolution passes. Uh, Mr. Robinson?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I notice Resolution twenty-two point fifty-one nineteen R and asks for its passage.
So we do introduce it and hold it? Or are we passing it?
Uh, introduction and passage. As amended, pass.
No, we're, uh, thirty-four sixty-one. Sorry, I wasn't... Thirty-four sixty-one R.
Thank you, Mr. President. Sorry about that. Okay, Mr. President, I know, notice Resolution thirty-four point sixty-one nineteen R and asks for its introduction.
Thank you, sir. Uh, can the clerk please read the resolution?
Resolution of the Common Council authorizing the mayor to execute a home rule request to allow alienation of parkland in connection with the Big C disinfection.
Hold on, that's the wrong one. Um, thirty-four sixty-one nineteen R. Resolution honoring Vera Michelson.
Resolution honoring Vera P. Michelson and naming Pennsylvania Avenue between Livingston Avenue and Beverly Avenue in the City of Albany Vera Mike Michelson Way in her honor.
And we'll be holding that resolution until the next council meeting. Uh, Mr. Conti?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I offer Resolution thirty-five sixty-one nineteen R. Request passage and a roll call vote thereon.
Thank you, sir. Uh, can the clerk please read the resolution?
Resolution of the Common Council recognizing and commemorating say-it-loud black and Latino gay pride twenty-nineteen.
Any discussion on the resolution?
Uh, briefly, I just want to make some brief remarks with, uh, regarding this resolution and the, uh, the next one related to Capitol Pride. Uh, these are both resolutions that we have adopted in the past, uh, to commemorate the Capitol, the pride celebrations, uh, during the month of June and, uh, also recognizing, uh, the significance of June as Pride Month. And this, this, this year is a particular, uh, of significance because it is the fiftieth anniversary of the Stonewall uprising, which occurred in nineteen sixty-nine, which is credited as the birth of the, uh, the, uh, lesbian gay LGBTQ, uh, human rights movement, um, which has really resulted in, uh, a number of achievements, uh, for the gay, lesbian, bisexual, trans community over the years, uh, and in particular, uh, here in the City of Albany where we've really been in the forefront on a number of issues before state or federal laws were changed. I'm wearing, people may have noticed, I'm wearing a button, uh, today, um, which actually goes back to nineteen eighty-seven, eighty-eight, um, at a time when this council was not very friendly to my community um, and to the efforts that we were making, uh, during that period to secure a basic human rights ordinance. Uh, people will recall back in nine, it was in nineteen eighty-seven, uh, that the first human rights ordinance was introduced. Uh, it was defeated in nineteen eighty-eight. My first, uh, testimony before this council actually happened in June of nineteen eighty-seven in this chamber when there was a public hearing, uh, the first of three public hearings that year. Um, and it wasn't until nineteen ninety-two that that ordinance was finally adopted. The, uh, the button says, um, I'll take it off because it's, I'm not sure who designed it at the time, but it's not always easy to read. Uh, justice delayed is justice denied, uh, against a, a pink triangle with a black shadow. But around it, it says Albany is ready for a lesbian and gay civil rights ordinance. Um, and that, that term really was a response to the, the responses that was coming out of this chamber and out of the mayor's office at the time when the ordinance was first introduced by one of my predecessors, Nancy Burton, that Albany was not ready. Uh, and it was a mobilization campaign that did turn out a lot of support. Uh, unfortunately, we were not successful. Um, and I just want to note, in eighty-seven or eighty-eight, in that first vote, there were only two members of the council that voted for adoption. One, of course, was Nancy Burton, who was the sponsor. Um, the other was Ne- Nebraska Brace, late Nebraska Brace, um, who summed up his reasons for supporting it very simply. Um, as a black man who experienced discrimination during his lifetime, he was not gonna stand by, while another community that experienced, uh, discrimination was seeking basic protections and civil rights. And, uh, he, he was, he courageously stood up, supported that, the ordinance that year, uh, became a true friend of the gay and lesbian community, someone I had a great deal of respect for, uh, and, uh, in terms of the work that he did, uh, for the City of Albany. Um, so it's a, as I say, it's a special celebration this year. Um, I hope everyone will, uh, consider joining in. Um, you are all welcome, uh, to, uh, join in on the, uh, parade, uh, which is on Sunday. Uh, steps off at twelve noon. Many members have done that in the past. Uh, and also for Black and Latino Pride, which happens in Washington Park on Saturday. Um, I will be making a presentation of the resolution around about twelve twenty-five. Uh, and members are also welcome to, uh, join if they wish as well. Uh, so I thank everyone for their support, uh, tonight for the two resolutions. And as I say, um, when this button was produced back in eighty-seven, eighty-eight, it was a very different council, uh, that were considering these issues. And we've made fantastic changes over the years, and that's very much appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Conti. Further discussion? Seeing none, can the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Anani?
Yes, co-sponsor please.
Mr. Pleers?
Yes.
Mr. Ballerin?
Yes, co-sponsor please.
Mr. Conti?
Um, yes, and everybody is listed as a co-sponsor on both resolutions. Okay, thank you.
Ms. O'Shed?
Yes.
Ms. Fahey? Ms. Farrell? Mr. Flynn? Mr. Howie?
Yes.
Mr. Igo? Mr. Johnson? Mr. Kimbrough?
Yes.
Ms. Love? Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Fifteen and the affirmative, zero negatives.
Thank you. Mr. Conti?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President, and I offer Resolution thirty-six sixty-one nineteen R. Request passage and a roll call vote thereon.
Can the clerk please read the resolution?
Resolution of the Common Council recognizing and commemorating Capitol Pride twenty-nineteen.
Any discussion on the resolution? Seeing none, can the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Anani? Mr. Pleers?
Yes.
Mr. Ballerin?
Yes.
Mr. Conti? Ms. O'Shed?
Yes.
Ms. Fahey? Ms. Farrell? Mr. Flynn? Mr. Howie?
Yes.
Mr. Igo? Mr. Johnson? Mr. Kimbrough? Ms. Love? Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Fifteen and the affirmative, zero negatives.
Resolution passes. And before I move on to the next resolution, I would like to pay, uh, due respect to Mr. Conti. Uh, not just for the work he's done on the council, but, uh, for that history lesson of, of what they've done in nineteen eighty-seven. And it showed five years later that their work was not in vain. So as a council member and as a colleague who I've been able to work with, I've seen the, I've seen how Mr. Conti has handled gay rights issue in the City of Albany. And he was the one, when I was in the council, who taught me when I was pro, uh, at the time, pro-civil unions. And I spoke with him and I, he, he sat down with me, said, "Corey, this is why we need gay marriage." And it changed my view. And so I really respect him for that. I really respect him for what him and Nancy Burton did in nineteen eighty-seven. I think this council should recognize that, and I'd like to say thank you, Mr. Conti. Um, sorry, I'm lost. Um, Ms. Fahey?
Thank you, Mr. President. I notice, um, Resolution thirty-eight sixty-one nineteen R. Ask for its introduction and passage and a roll call vote.
Uh, can the clerk please read the resolution?
Resolution of the Common Council authorizing the mayor to execute a home rule request to allow alienation of parkland in connection with the Big C disinfection and floatables control project and associated infrastructure as part of the Albany Pool Community's long-term control plan and Beaver Creek Clean River Project.
Any discussion on the resolution? Mr. Howie?
Um, two weeks ago, I voted no on this, spoke against it. I'm not against, uh, a clean river, but I am very concerned what the plans are for our sewer system. I think, uh, you know, this thing keeps coming back and back. And what we heard the last time and really sent shocks down, you know, up my spine, was that we're gonna go, we're, we're supposed to move away from a combined sewer system, and the plan for this is to make it a combined, uh, a storm system, make it a combined sewer system. So I just can't, in all honesty, honesty, vote for this because I think we don't have a good plan in place, and I think we need to go back to the drawing board. Sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Howie. Any further discussion? Ms. Fahey?
Uh, I just want to remind everyone, this is, um, a very technical, uh, change to this resolution. This is something we passed the last time council met, and I would encourage everyone's support again tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fahey. Any further discussion? Seeing none, can the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Anani?
Yes.
Mr. Pleers?
Yes.
Mr. Ballerin?
Yes.
Mr. Conti? Mr. O'Shed? Ms. Fahey? Ms. Farrell? Mr. Flynn? Mr. Howie?
No.
Mr. Igo? Mr. Johnson? Mr. Kimbrough?
Yes.
Ms. Love? Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
No.
Eleven and the affirmative, four negative.
Resolution passes. Uh, moving on, uh, resolutions held. Mr. Robinson? Did I miss one? Yes, Mr. Robinson?
Thank you, Mr. President. I notice Resolution, uh, number twenty-two point fifty-one nineteen R and asks for its passage with amendment.
Sir, um, can the clerk please read the resolution?
A resolution of the City of Albany's Common Council calling on the New York State Legislature to enact and the governor to sign legislation legalizing, regulating, and taxing marijuana in the state of New York.
Is there a discussion on the resolution? Seeing none, um, Mr. Robinson first.
Thank you, Mr. President, and, uh, certainly to, uh, my colleagues on the council. I want to thank, uh, Councilwoman Dorsey, Dr. Dorsey A. Pleers, uh, who was the chair of the Public Safety Committee and also the Public Safety Committee at large for passing, um, this, uh, piece of, this resolution out with, uh, positive, uh, recommendation. Um, two critical resolutions are, have been, are gonna be introduced, um, this evening. And I stand before you as an elected official, a community leader advocate, and also a casualty. A casualty of a war, a war not fought on the shores of Normandy, a war not fought in the jungles of Vietnam, a war not waged in the deserts of the Persian Gulf, a war not waged in the mountains of Afghanistan. But this war has been waged in the land of the free and the home of the brave. This war, code named the War on Drugs, used deception to unjustly target and criminally indict communities of color. This war has ripped families apart, plunged communities into poverty, forced children to grow up without their parents, exerted spiritual, mental, emotional, and physical trauma on black and brown people. This War on Drugs, which did not have any ten, any scientific backing or relevant research, but it had nothing to do what was being targeted, but everything to do with who was targeted. During a hearing on marijuana laws in nineteen thirty, claims were made about marijuana's ability to cause men of color to become violent and solicit sex from white women. This imagery became the backdrop for the Marijuana Tax Act of nineteen thirty-seven, which effectively banned the selling use of marijuana. A member of President Nixon's administration admitted that the two enemies of the government were those who were anti-war and black people. And if black people can be criminalized by the thing they did, it would allow the government to arrest their leaders, raid their homes, disrupt their meetings, and vilify them night after night on the evening news. And he candidly admitted, "Did we know we were lying about the War on Drugs?" He said, "Of course we did." Black and brown communities around this state and country have yet to recover from this war. This is because the laws that support the war are still in place. This is an insult to black and brown communities across this nation and state. And we keep in mind that in Schenectady County, it was recently discovered that over, blacks are seventy-fourth percent more likely to be arrested for marijuana possession than whites. Statewide, blacks and Hispanics accounted for eighty-two percent of those arrested for offenses involving marijuana, while whites accounted for only fifteen percent. While black and brown children have watched and continue to watch their family members and loved ones vilified, being put into handcuffs and hauled to jail, white children are seeing their loved ones as heroes and contributors to the entrepreneurial spirit of America. These resolutions are crucial to turning the tide and changing the narrative in our state and city. And we cannot continue to wait to overturn laws that have their roots in racism. As Mr. Conti, or Councilmember Conti put out, "Justice delayed is justice denied."
Thank you, Mr. Robinson. Mr. Conti?
Excuse me. Thank you, Mr. President. You know, I think, uh, during committee discussion of this, uh, earlier, it was... It was pretty clear that there was a, uh, a great deal of consensus, uh, in support of the principles that were embodied in the legislation, but some concerns about endorsing a specific piece of legislation. But some concerns about endorsing a specific piece of legislation. And I just want to express, uh, I, I, my appreciation to Mr. Robinson for accepting the amendment, Uh, which I think actually makes it a stronger resolution in that it focuses on the principles, Uh, that we may want to see embodied in a marijuana legalization bill, As opposed to a bill number that just gets chalked up to another resolution supporting a particular bill Without looking at the actual items and text and, uh, principles that we would like to see included. So with that, I, I will be supporting the resolution tonight. I do think it's a, a stronger resolution that way, so it's a statement of what we would like to s, it, to see In helping to fashion the perfect and not waiting for the perfect. And, uh, I think it's a, a good way that we should actually, you know, approach other state legislation That we might be looking at, uh, as far as, uh, resolutions in support, that really looking at the principles We want to see embodied in something, uh, rather than picking up a piece of legislation that may or may not change. So, I think it's a stronger resolution, respectfully, uh, and I will be supporting it. Thank you, Ms. Conti. Ms. Fahey.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I too appreciate Councilman Robinson's willingness to, uh, make some changes That, uh, uh, that would make this resolution, uh, something that I could support. I do have some concerns, uh, that we're, that this whole process may be moving too quickly. I, um, I am very concerned about, uh, some of the impacts, health impacts, uh, marijuana legalization may have. And that we haven't had the, um, hearings that we need to have at the state level To really take a closer look at some of those impacts. But this legislation, uh, does leave, leave it open that we, uh, would like to have some type of legislation passed, Uh, that so it doesn't really e- exactly say when that will be. So there's room for us to do that, uh, due diligence, um, to take a really close look at how, um, passing, uh, this law, Passing, uh, approval of marijuana will impact us. And I've said right along that I'm absolutely supportive of, uh, our next resolution for decriminalization and expungement. So, um, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Balleran.
I also want to commend Councilman Robinson for his, uh, willingness to work with us And work through the, uh, issues that we have. And I hope our state lawmakers see that as an example of what we need them to do as well. I don't think us saying that we want legalization is a statement of us saying we want our kids to smoke weed. I think we can control, I think we, as parents, and I'm not a parent, uh, but parents, You don't want your kids to smoke cigarettes. You don't want your kids to drink. But you also don't want your kids to go to jail for smoking a joint. So, it's policy in the right direction. I appreciate what Councilman Robinson did. I'm hoping it trickles up, because we do need compromises. We do need to see something get pushed through, so that this issue is dealt with, um, and not just swept under the rug. Thank you.
Mr. Howie.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I'd like to thank, uh, Councilman Robinson, Councilwoman Apliers, Councilman Johnson, For touching on a tough issue. You know, I look in the mirror and I see a white face and gray hair, and, you know, to be honest, Life has been skewed towards me in this country or in this state. And it hit home when I listen and when I hear the statistic. Seventy-four percent of Schenectady residents, if you're black, you're gonna be maybe a, arrested. That's like, one out of, I'm sorry, three out of four. I, it's, it's mind-boggling. So I think this legislation takes a big step forward, that it starts a conversation. Because we need to have a conversation that's gonna go beyond this. That how do we get our races and our people of all different types to be able to talk and work together And make this a viable community? You know, when I grew up, the big thing was that America was the melting pot. You know, give us your poor, give us your homeless, give us your people, we're gonna give them a new life. And I know sometimes out of Washington, we hear something different. But that was the founding principle of this country, and it's so important that we try to get back to that. So, thank you again for doing this. I'm, I'm sure this is gonna pass tonight, and I hope that the state will do the same. Thank you.
Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I just want to, um, com- commend my colleague, Because, you know, I know your personal story and how you have been affected. And when we say, um, young men growing up without, um, their parents, you are a, a model for that. And, you know, we, we quite, we, rolls, um, questions arose about the, uh, young people, um, Participating in it, you know, as the sponsor of this bill, you know, he's a, um, a fine example of, you know, choices. He's a fine example of parents, you know, doing their jobs, family supporting their family members. So, you know, um, it's, it's, it's hard when you've been affected by something and to keep an open mind And, uh, be willing to work with, you know, a body of people. So, you know, I want to commend him for it, because I know he put a lot of, um, time and research into, you know, Uh, being responsible for, um, introducing this, um, legislation. And, you know, I just want to take my hat off, because it's sometimes when you are personally affected by things, It's hard to be open to other people's suggestions. So, um, I just wanted to, uh, recognize him, uh, for that tonight. And I think that a lot of people could take a lesson from, um, one of the youngest, um, people, um, on the council. So, I just wanted to recognize him, um, for it, and thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Johnson. Ms. Duchesne.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, um, wanted to, I wasn't planning on speaking, Uh, but when council member spoke so eloquently, I wanted to acknowledge, uh, what an excellent, uh, speech that was. Uh, an impassioned support, uh, that contained very important information That we need to constantly be reminding ourselves of the inequities in what has been going on for decades. I referenced earlier, uh, you know, that I went to New Paltz, and pretty much everybody I knew, you know, was, uh, Involved in drugs or doing drugs at once, or, and nobody was being arrested. And that's over forty years ago. And, and the fact that people are not being arrested is not because people were not being arrested, But because people who were educated, white, middle-class were not being arrested. And that just highlights, my point was to highlight the inequity, uh, in what has been going on. And, um, my, the only thing I want to add is that I do hope the legislature acts quickly on this And doesn't look for the perfect legislation, because we need to correct this injustice now. And something that is less than perfect in the way of legislation, uh, is gonna be far better Than allowing this to continue another day. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Apliers.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I've made my, um, remarks during our committee meeting About where I stand, uh, on this legislation, so I just want to, um, just express gratitude. I keep this, uh, ruler on my desk as a reminder. It says, "Life has no remote. Get up and change it yourself." And I constantly look at that, um, as we make decisions about, um, legislation that impacts people's lives on a daily basis. And so I want to commend you, Councilman Robinson, for, um, embodying that And putting forth legislation that lends itself to some level of controversy And standing firm in your conviction and, um, advocating and fighting for people, uh, who are really voiceless, Who are behind bars and oftentimes don't have someone to stand up for them. So, thank you. And I also want to thank, uh, Councilman Igo as the Chair of the Public Safety Committee. We have had some, um, a lot of interesting discussions lately And, um, issues that lend themselves to controversy. And, um, the committee has stood right in the face of adversity and tackled those issues head-on. And Councilman Igo, instead of just throwing up his hands and saying, "I don't agree", Offered up recommendations in which we now have a piece of legislation that everyone can, well, I suspect, uh, feel comfortable with. So I just wanted to thank you also, uh, Councilman Igo, for that.
Thank you, Ms. Apliers. Seeing no further discussion, can the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Anani.
Yes.
Ms. Apliers.
Yes, co-sponsor.
Mr. Balleran.
Yes.
Mr. Conti. Ms. Dochet.
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Ms. Fahey. Ms. Farrell. Mr. Flynn. Mr. Howie.
Yes, co-sponsor.
Mr. Igo. Mr. Johnson. Mr. Kimbrough.
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Ms. Love. Mr. O'Brien.
Yes.
Mr. Robinson.
Yes.
Fifteen in the affirmative, zero negative.
Resolution passes. Mr. Robinson.
Thank you, Ms., thank you, Mr. President. I know, I know this Resolution Number Twenty-Three Point Fifty-One Point Nineteen-R, and ask for its passage.
Thank you, sir. Uh, can the clerk please read the resolution?
A resolution of the City of Albany's Common Council Calling on the New York State Division of Criminal Justice Services, The New York State Office of Court Administration, and the Albany County District Attorney To work in unison to expunge the records of all City of Albany misdemeanor marijuana convictions In contemplation of the passing of the Marijuana Regulation and Taxation Act.
Thank you. Any discussion on the resolution? Seeing none? Can the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Anani.
Yes.
Ms. Apliers.
Yes.
Mr. Balleran.
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Mr. Conti. Ms. Dochet.
Yes.
Ms. Fahey. Ms. Farrell. Mr. Flynn. Mr. Howie.
Yes.
Mr. Igo. Mr. Johnson. Mr. Kimbrough.
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Ms. Love. Mr. O'Brien.
Yes.
Mr. Robinson.
Yes.
Fifteen in the affirmative, zero negative.
Resolution passes. Moving on to resolutions held, oh, that's where we are, sorry. Uh, Mr. Kimbrough.
Thank you, Mr. President. I notice Resolution Thirty-One, Fifty-Two, Nineteen, and ask for its passage, as amended.
Thank you, sir. Can the clerk please read the resolution?
Resolution of the City of Albany's Common Council In Support of the Removal of Geographic Restrictions Under the Emergency Tenant Protection Act and Good Cause Eviction Legislation.
Is there any discussion on the resolution? Mr. Kimbrough.
Yes, uh, I believe as, as leaders that we, uh, we have a responsibility. We're responsible for safe streets, pub, you know, public safety, roads. Uh, and I also happen to think that we're, um, have a certain amount of responsibility in providing affordable housing for our residents. And this resolution, uh, supports that. And again, it's a reminder that, uh, the removal of the geographic restrictions, i- it's a starting point. It's, we're not passing rent control. We're getting in the game. And we can come back once the state passes it, so, or for that portion, um, think about that. And as far as good, good cause evictions, I mean, we've had people, you know, talk about, uh, their, their experiences. It's, it's real. I mean, for some council members, it's realer than others, but, but it's real. I have people calling me all the time about getting, you know, booted out of their apartment for this reason or that. They call me about code issues. I, I say, you know, talk to code enforcement or talk to United Tenants, You know, trying to guide them in that direction. And it, it, this, this is vital, I believe. And with that, I'll have a seat and have a co-sponsor that may want to say a few things on it.
Mr. Robinson.
Ditto.
You sure don't act like a reverend. Ms. Fahey.
Oh, thank you, Mr. President. I wish we had had more time and caucus, because I had some of the same issues with this, uh, resolution In that it refers specific, to a specific piece of legislation. And I would have preferred that it referred more broadly to, um, some of the principles in that legislation. But, uh, having given a lot of thought to it, I feel so strongly about some of the issues That this, uh, legislation deals with, that I felt like I absolutely have to support, uh, this legislation. Uh, we heard earlier sixty percent of Albany residents rent, fifty percent are rent burdened. Uh, you know, it's just absolutely necessary that our, uh, rental housing be up to code. And that is not always the case for many different reasons. We have large waiting lists for subsidized housing and Section Eight housing. People deserve to, to live in decent housing. And, uh, we have to improve, uh, the situation so that, uh, tenants can live good and comfortable lives. It's wrong when, uh, there are incidents where rents are raised unreasonably to evict a tenant. It's wrong when tenants complain about various code issues and in, uh, And they are evicted as a result of that. That has to stop, and this legislation will help that happen. There's a lot of aspects of the legislation that are still being negotiated. You know, one of them, uh, is that they're saying there's a, the county would establish a board to determine allowable rent increases. Well, you know, us here in the city, do we want a group, you know, that is county-wide telling us, uh, um, You know, what the allowable rent increases are? I don't think we do. So there's, there's a lot of questions and things that have to be worked out with this legislation. There's currently a thirty-day notification on month-to-month rentals. I know they're looking at possible, uh, ninety-day notification before a landlord, uh, gives notification to evict. That sounds so much more, uh, reasonable to me. Again, they're working that out. And there's discussion about requiring mandatory inspection whenever a tenant moves into a new rental. Currently, we do it once every thirty months. And it's a, uh, you know, we would need much more in the way of financial resources and, uh, staffing to do that. Where's that funding gonna come from? Is the state going to provide that? Or is that gonna be, uh, on ma, you know, uh, something that the city will just end up having to pay for? You know, uh, the size, will this apply to what size apartment buildings? Most of our rentals here in the City of Albany are, are, uh, two and three units. So a lot of questions that have to be worked out, um, but it is certainly important legislation. All our, uh, residents, whether they rent or not, de- deserve to live in, uh, decent housing And not be fearful of, um, being evicted, uh, without warrant. Thank you.
Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, sometimes when, um, discussions come up, You have to really be in a position to understand how people feel, you know, um. You know, I was in that position where, you know, someone who owned, uh, a building got upset with me Because I didn't want to accept, you know, their, um, short-cutting of trying to address issues and concerns That were placed on them as the homeowner. And, you know, when you listen to the young lady say that, um, she had to pay a security, um, deposit and, um, you know, to move. To move for a person who has all the means to handle the move is tough. You know, it's real tough. So just imagine the, uh, pressures that are put on a person who struggled to get their, um, security deposit, right? And just because someone, uh, you, you called because you want what you pay for, you know, um, It's very clear that in a lease, they want their rent between the first and the fifth. And if they don't get it, it's gonna be in, uh, an addition, you know, that is, um, supported legally in a binding agreement. But we have no one to advocate. But we have no one to advocate, and United Tenants has to be overworked of all of the different styles of management that you incur when you're dealing with a landlord. So I applaud, again, you know, this is meaningful legislation because I'm a educator. I work with families on why they're having difficulties getting their kid to school on time. And sometimes it's because of rent issues, you know. A single parent is working an additional job to make ends meet. And so when you work in an additional job and you come across irregularities in your living, and then you bring it to someone's attention, and, you know, some of the responses that I hear is, you know, this is a new person that just bought a building that people have been living in for twenty years. And, you know, the first time you call, their response is, "Well, you can just pack up your stuff and leave." And I just think about Sandy, who worked at United Tenants for quite so many years. And I shared a story about one of the parents' experience. And she said she felt so, she felt so sorry because this particular landlord has a history of doing this, and his bankroll is such that it doesn't matter to him. But we have people who don't have that money to invest in their argument. And just like the young lady said, she paid her rent on time, she did everything right, and still lost her case. So, you know, sometimes that's when the people who have experienced that, like, our voices should be heard because it's painful to sit there and listen to someone talk about something that you have been affected by. And, you know, when you are in a position of leadership and you can do something about it, you know, that's where it would be beneficial if people hear us out and understand that that's an island that no one wants to be on, you know, that you get told that you have to move and you weren't planning on moving. And, you know, you don't have the finances to be able to deal with that. And then you'd get caught up in the draw of a person making you wait ninety days to get your security deposit back. And then they're trying to deduct, you know, so when you bring up, Councilwoman, about maybe shortening or making the expectation more current. Because a lot of times, people get caught up in these arguments and, you know, you just really just want what you pay for because you can't give your landlord seven hundred and fifty dollars because you didn't have central air the whole month. They don't, it doesn't work like that. So we have to come up with supports that will empower people that don't have money for lawyers. And, you know, we have to provide some type of support for United Tenants because it's just one organization supporting a whole city. So, you know, I feel that it's a need that voices be heard and especially people who have been through this similar situations because we can learn a lot from people that experienced that because not always are the people that come up and share their concern. They don't even have enough time to tell a full story. So we have to do something because if we don't, what we're going to have is we're going to have a bunch of empty houses, empty apartments that aren't being filled. And then we're going to have a bunch of people that, you know, are still looking for a place to live. If you look at it right now, there's no decent apartments for, you know, people in the inner cities. So, you know, when you do find a decent apartment, you want to keep it. And a lot of times, wanting what you pay for becomes problematic to a landlord that feels like he has the upper hand over a tenant that doesn't have the same financial resources that they have. So we have to try to even out the playing field for our renters because as the person said, it's more renters than homeowners in Albany. You know, so the renters should have a voice as well. So I will be supporting this legislation tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Conti?
Thank you, Mr. President. So I wasn't able to attend the Housing Committee meeting last week for personal reasons that I think most members are aware of. But I was able to catch the recording and watch it. And I will give you a tip, if you have problems with the sound, use the earbuds. It makes a big difference in being able to hear. But what I was struck with in terms of the people who spoke at the hearing or the committee meeting, the issue, the predominant issue was, one was related to eviction and retaliatory evictions and the fear of complaints. And that really was the predominant concerns and expressions that I heard and that I've heard also elsewhere outside. And so I'm conflicted here. The resolution itself actually doesn't address the eviction issue or good cause eviction. I mean, it predominantly deals with eliminating geographical restrictions on the rent control law. And then just has one sentence at the end, which says, "We also support good cause eviction." But doesn't in anywhere state the case or the reasons why or the importance of establishing those standards. To be consistent with how I felt about Mr. Robinson's resolution on marijuana, you know, I would support a resolution that really focused more on the principles that we want versus endorsing a specific piece of legislation. I will tell you right now that what happens on all of these issues, it's not going to be embodied likely in the bill numbers that are referred here. It's all going to be wrapped up into a much bigger package that's going to wrap all of these issues together. There's also separate, like, while we're, while the resolution endorses elimination of the geographic restrictions on the existing rent control law, that rent control law also is going to be changed in a couple of weeks from what it is right now. And some of the protections that people have talked about that are in there, that they, you know, indicate for landlords, probably may not be there when the extension is adopted because we don't know, there are a whole bunch of provisions. We don't know what the rent control law is going to look at. That aside, you know, I understand it's an option. I don't know how I would feel about moving into it if we did have that option. That's a different discussion that we would have at that time. You know, Ms. Fahy did, you know, reference that the Rent Guidelines Board would be something created by the county, not us, and it would be a countywide board, even if just the City of Albany opted into it. But we'll see what happens with that because we don't know how this legislation is going to pan out. I do think that the more important part of it is the good cause eviction provisions, which the resolution really doesn't discuss. And I do support statewide legislation on good cause evictions. I don't necessarily fully, you know, support all the provisions in the legislation that's referenced. I think there are some modifications that need to be made, which I think likely will happen. So I am conflicted in terms of being consistent, in terms of really stating the principles that we would want in state legislation, which I think is a stronger statement rather than just endorsing a particular bill. And having a resolution that does endorse a particular bill, et cetera. I do think also, aside from that and hearing some of the concerns expressed at the Housing Committee meeting and others, that there are some steps that we can take here in Albany that we might want to look at, some of which have been discussed in the past, that might strengthen, hopefully, tenant rights and their ability to hold landlords accountable for conditions. I think we've talked about in the past, in the prior council, it didn't pan out. But doing a tenant bill of rights that would be associated with ROPs, I think we can use the fact that we issue ROPs and that you need to have an ROP in order to rent as leverage to try to achieve some of the changes and protections that people talk about. And I don't think we should shy away from using that leverage. I think maybe we might even want to look at something like a tenant ombudsman within the Building Department. Someone that, you know, one of the things I heard is that people have complaints or issues, trying to get follow-up, understand the status, someone who might be their advocate. Instead of going to different inspectors, someone in the Building Department that's just dedicated to working with tenants and complaints and resolving those complaints and helping to move that through. Maybe we contract somewhere down the road with United Tenants on legal issues. I don't know, but that's another idea I just thought about tonight. I think we can do things in terms of civil penalties as far as retaliatory evictions. And again, using the ROP as leverage to, you know, safeguard against landlords that might engage in retaliatory eviction and not be shy about using that. We probably should also, you know, reexamine some of the ROP inspection process. Right now, we do it every thirty months. I think doing it every time it, you know, there's a change in tenancy is going to be difficult, especially with student rentals. So I don't know if that's, and that's going to put a tremendous amount of, you know, additional workload on the Building Department. But I think that there might be ways that we can look at issues related to ROP inspections for particular properties that might have a record of problems, and we can measure that in some way. So there are things I think we can look at locally and should be able to look at locally and move on. We can have more of a serious discussion on that. And I think we, and it's something that we should pull together that involves a discussion that brings members together rather than putting something on the table, take it or leave it. That's important. But, so this is, again, the conflict I have, while I, I am, I'm not quite sure on the rent control piece, but that's, you know, I know that's an opt-in provision. The good cause eviction standards is something that I support as far as state legislation and would want to see moved forward. And I think that that piece, my sense is, is having serious discussion. As I say, it probably will not be this bill. Elements of this bill will be incorporated, I think, into a broader package. I would much prefer that we had a resolution focusing on that particular aspect, which this resolution doesn't. And that we stated our principles in terms of what we would want in a good cause eviction bill. So while I support good cause convictions, I want to see us move forward. I want to see us state principles. I can't support the resolution tonight. Again, consistency and, you know, and how I felt about Mr. Robinson's resolution in terms of, I think we need to state our principles versus endorsing specific pieces of legislation. But I will make my position known to my legislators, or our legislators, in terms of how I feel and the importance of moving forward on good cause convictions, good cause evictions. But I will vote present on the resolution tonight to be consistent and, again, the way I think we need to approach some of these issues. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Conti. Seeing no further discussion, can the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Anani?
Yes. The rats too high.
Ms. Pleers?
Yes, co-sponsor.
Mr. Ballerin?
Yes.
Mr. Conti? Ms. O'Shea?
Yes.
Ms. Fahy? Ms. Farrell? Mr. Flynn? Mr. Howey?
Yes.
Mr. Igo? Mr. Johnson? Mr. Kimbrough? Ms. Love? Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Fourteen in the affirmative, zero negative, one present.
Resolution passes. Moving on to Commissioners of Deeds. We do have a Commissioner of Deeds.
No, just one thing, the remaining resolutions on the agenda are held.
Thank you, Mr. Conti. Mr. Kimbrough?
Thank you, Mr. President. I offer list or a name on the list for appointment to Commissioner of Deeds and waive the reading of a name.
Do I have a second on that recommendation? All those in favor? Those opposed? Ocean passes. Mr. Conti?
If there's no further...
I'd just like to ask Michelle to set up some law committee meetings. Why I have everybody at Richard, are you okay with this?
Well, I'm not going to walk me...
Your taxi, your quiet, your picture, your little section. Is that ready to go into discussion?
The, well, tell me if you, if we've gotten a response to our request to, from the Police Department. Did we? We haven't gotten a response.
So that's another one. Ten, ten again. Michelle? The hen's discussion has been amended lately, and we just have a meeting for that. And I will introduce a piece after working with Brooklyn Joy on vacant buildings. If you could schedule that, I think we're getting more than one night. Okay, anybody else in law?
Just one more thing, the... If I can also, Mr. President, I'm coming back to Resolution eighty-six one oh two eighteen R by Councilmember Pleers related to the equity agenda. So I did annotate that resolution with very specific guidelines in terms of what committees should look at and also the areas of code that they should look at as far as potential amendments. I tried to organize a meeting of committee chairs, no one responded to me. It really hurt my feelings. So, and Ms. Pleers and I have been talking about how to get this moving. It had been referred to the Council Operations Committee. So we have discussed it, and Ms. Pleers has requested that the resolution be re-referenced from Council Operations to the Law Committee. Huh? I know you have a whole bunch, so, but I'm just going to make that change. So we'll reference it to law, and Joe and I, and maybe we can talk about some of the issues and whatever. And otherwise, unless there is any further business, okay?
Mr. Howey would like to be recognized. Joe, I know you're the senior member of the council, but come on. Thank you, Mr...thanks, Joe. Mr. Howey? There's no, I mean, this is miscellaneous, so. Mr. O'Brien?
Well, I just wanted to comment in response to some of the comments made tonight, particularly with regard to the Uniform Sustainable Development Ordinance. And I agree with Mark Robinson, our former colleague's comments that in two thousand seventeen, we were presented with a multi-hundred-page document to consider. And we were told, of course, that it was going to be great for Albany. It was going to speed up the whole process. And gosh, we were given various diagrams of three-story buildings. And now we're told that there, we were kind of shocked by the number of variances that were given. And I can think of a few cases where the interpretation given by the Planning Department and by the Planning Board to certain projects, certain things that were allowed to happen, didn't seem to me to be within the plain language of the statute. And I had never imagined that it was so easy to just dispense with an environmental impact statement on projects that really, as Pete Sheehan pointed out, should require environmental impact statements. So I don't think, you know, we're opposed to development. I think we are looking at making the tweaks to it and which were envisioned when we passed it, that we were going to revisit it at some point in time. Now, I haven't had the huge projects... Now, I haven't had the huge projects that I know some of the other wards have had and that have expressed what seems to be, in many ways, an end run maybe around some of the requirements that should be put in place for safety, for impact on our environment. I did listen today to a thing that was on WAMC, and I was kind of surprised that our planning commissioner said, "Well, back in 1950, Albany had more people living in it than we're going to put in with all of the apartments that are currently online." And I thought that was rather strange because in 1950, we dumped raw sewage into the Hudson River. We had a sewer system that was 70 years younger than it is now, and we, it's really apples and oranges. I think it was rather naive just to say that because we once supported a population of over 100,000, in fact, I think at one point Albany's biggest population was 125 or maybe even 130. I don't think that that excuses a lot of the protections, and as former council member Robinson had said, there's basically implicit, and we thought there was implicit in the USDO when we enacted it, that there was a reciprocal response, that developers had a reciprocal responsibility to the community. And quite frankly, at least in one example that I've seen, I think that has been passed over. In fact, I think a plain reading of the requirements of the USDO had been passed over, and that was the clear-cutting of a lot that very likely has lead contamination in it, clear-cut with a bulldozer. And I remember it borders a lot that many years ago was a discussion in front of this council because they were planning on putting a school on it, and they have ultimately abandoned that idea. The city invited the county health department in in 2003 to do a study of ground contaminants. The health department did that in 2003 and found lead contaminations one to two feet below the surface, and nevertheless, when the developer submitted the applications for 60 Calvin Avenue, he asked for basically a waiver of an environmental impact study. And then, the whole statute, at least according to my plain reading of it, was abandoned because there are two sections. There's one section that says if somebody owns a piece of land and they want to cut the foliage on it without a development plan, they could cut up to 50% of it. And then there's another section, very clear, where you're talking about what a major development. And a major development, in this case, it was planned for 44 apartments, it certainly meets the requirements, the definition of a major development. And that clearly says that any clear-cutting was supposed to be in conformance with a site plan. Well, a site plan was never done. The commissioner, there's a section that says, "Oh, if you're going to do some tree and vegetation work, you need a general service, commissioner of general services approval." So they come in for a very limited one. We want to do soil testing, and we want to trim the overhanging on some of the sidewalks. So the commissioner of general services granted a very limited work, and they started to clear-cut the thing. And the commissioner of general services then, since he supervises forestry, come in and issued a written stop-work order. And then, okay, two weeks, maybe two and a half weeks later, the bulldozers are back out here pursuing the clear-cutting. And when I called Sergio, the commissioner, he says, "Well, I was overruled. The commissioner of planning basically said that he applied the 50% rule." Yeah, but this guy's going to develop it. The 50% rule isn't an automatic thing. So then I later learned that the commissioner of planning actually did, he did a site, he had no survey equipment to determine how much of the lot had been cleared, plus the whole lot, since there was going to be a development and since it had been submitted for development, all the clearing should have been done pursuant to the site plan review. Now, we have the potential that the, you know, the ground surfaces have certainly been disturbed, and certainly if the health department found lead contamination one foot under the soil, a foot away from where this individual is developing the property, and since his property had the same previous history of ownership as the city-owned land, I think nothing should have been disturbed until we had a site plan review. Now, I never would have envisioned that the commissioner would have taken upon himself, I think misinterpreted the statute, would have given all these variances in light of a county health department study that's on file on the adjoining land with a common previous ownership. So I really think we do have to come out and start to take a review of this. This is not anti-development. To me, it's prudent, smart development, and we wrote right into this statute that it would be reviewed at some point in, in time, and I think that time has come. And I think, I think we do need a pause, I don't say a stop, but I think we need a pause to look at it and see that responsible development is what's being done. And that's all I have to say, and I'm feeling not so great right, right now, so I may wind up leaving before the end of the discussion.
Thank you, Mr. O'Brien. Mr. Howie?
Thank you, Mr. President. There's 22 big projects on the books of the planning board, and I'm going to send out the list, a taxpayer had sent me a list. There's over 6,500 units being planned for the city. 6,500, okay? Let's talk about infrastructure, and that's what I keep talking about. Number one, our sewer and water, we know we have problems there. Number two, I don't have to tell you, "Look at your roads," because you know what the roads look like. And number three, schools. And I know there's quite a few members or former members of the school board here. How can we handle another 6,500, I'm not going to say we're going to 6,500, but 6,500 units, even if half of them have children, where do they go to school? So I think we have a problem, and I want to, one of the things that came up is that density is good. And I'm really surprised because, then again, I'm a little bit old, like I said earlier, but when I went to school, one of the things they told us when I took psychology was that in dense environments, your crime rate goes up, your fires go up, and people, you know, fighting among each other goes up. Density, when I grew up, wasn't a good thing, that everybody, the dream was to be able to spread out, that you'd have room to go, you know, to spread out. So, yeah, we can make a little bit of money, but with the apartment complexes and their dorms on Washington Avenue, we did surveys, we've had like 300 calls between the two buildings in eight months. I mean, we know there's problems, we have EMT calls. When you have that type of density, especially in an area that's not used to it and doesn't have the roads to be able to handle the traffic. I want to talk about apartment dwellers. And, you know, I lived in an apartment, and one of the reasons that I got out was I had a dog, and I couldn't find an apartment that would let me keep my dog, you know, and I couldn't, I didn't want to put the dog to sleep, I tried to get rid of it and I just couldn't. But I ended up really struggling in getting a house. But let's talk about the politics of apartment dwellers. How many committee people here can go into a big apartment building and get signatures on a petition or, or, you know, hand out literature for people? It's difficult. And I mean, they even cut down, you have Mr. Flynn there, can tell you as the chair of the party, it's hard to get signatures in these big buildings. You can't even get in the front door, and if you do, you might have to sneak in, now you're on camera, sneaking in, trying to do democracy. I mean, what are we, what are we designing? I want to talk about the houses that they're, these big apartments that they're talking about. They're not made with steel, they're not made out of a permanent structure, brick or cement, they're made out of particleboard wood, treated with this fiberglass coating on the outside to make it look like brick or look like stone, and it's not. It's a cheap stucco, it's not even real stone stucco. They're a real fire danger. The life on those buildings, you can talk to any building engineer, they'll tell you, these buildings are meant to last like 30 years, 40 years. What do we do with these buildings when they outlive their usefulness? If we do got to take them down? That dump over in Rensler is going to be closed 30 years from now. What do the people in Albany do with these buildings? This stuff is toxic. There's glues in the particleboard, they're not using natural materials anymore, they're using this artificial stuff. Where do we dump it? So it's something that we should think about. The last thing I want to talk about is U-Auburny. And I'm going to send this to everybody, I'm sorry, I'm going to, I hate flooding email boxes, but I will. I got a note from the Vice President of Finance and Business. U-Auburny's starting to feel the pressure with all these apartments going up around the university. They're competing with the university. 10% of the revenue from the university comes from the dorms. These dorms are manned by RDs, RAs. The kids are put in an environment where, you know, they're taught responsible citizenship. Now they go to these private dorms, there's nobody there. There's no RA, there's no RD, they can do whatever they want. Okay? So I do have a note from the president saying that they are being hit and there will be layoffs and programs cut at the school. Now, Sales Hall, which is that alumni quad, the downtown, I'm not sure whose ward that falls in, they're shutting it down. They can't, they don't have enough students to go in it. So we're starting to see the effect there, and again, I'm just, you know, I hate to sound like Chicken Little that the sky's falling. Well, the sky's not falling, and we're not going to start, stop development, and I don't want to stop development, but putting up a six-story or seven-story apartment building on a road like Western Avenue right next to the university, next to One Family Homes, is just not the right thing to do. And I'm sorry, it's not good planning. And what I would propose is that we do a symposium. Let's get the universities involved. RPI has a good planning program. The University of Albany has a good planning program. Let's bring in the community. Let's do some real good, what does this people in the city of Albany want? It's not a few people coming in, I can get in 30 people here anytime to come in and talk about stuff, and the other group saying, "Well, we want, we want all these apartments, we want this density." That's, is that what the real people want? The people who are paying the taxes want? We need to do a real good study and figure out where we're going to go. This USDO was in before I took office, and, you know, we still haven't looked at it yet, and it's a long process to look at. But let's do it right. Let's do it right the next time and get it done right. Thank you.
Ms. Fahey?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to comment that Chris Spencer from the planning department, you know, obviously there's a lot of people who are upset about some of the various aspects of the development projects, there's a lot of questions on the council about various development projects. Chris Spencer is planning to come in, we're looking at a date, June 26, and he's going to give a presentation, and it'll be an opportunity for some good discussion on some of these issues.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson?
And I was very, very, I was very excited about the chair of the planning committee that we can do a lot of opposition about that. And, you know, we do this, uh, so, yes, and, you know, I thought of again, you know, what are we going to do, continuous, uh, this regard of community's voice, you know, I don't think that he brings the table is more valuable than how the community feels like, for the sign we put up, zero, how much, my question, with the, uh, I would, how the planning committee sparks the community and how they, uh, have a, uh, I don't understand how people continue to represent offices or, you know, committees, and they're not just trying to, to, uh, to sit in and, uh, use these to serve. So I'm going to put it out there once again, what are we going to do about this time that we be, um, in front of, you know, the year, I just randomly, like, people, here, people, all types of people, you know, sitting, feeling like they're not heard, like, I'm showing, and I, I do know that, uh, like, the issue, you know, I didn't hear it, it sparked, I'm putting out there first, I, I'm putting out there again, that I think that we need to revisit, we need to handle, we need to serve a little different.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Mr. Conti?
Thank you, Mr. President. If there's no further business, I'd make a motion to adjourn.
Second? All in favor? Mean to adjourn.